Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' March 6, 2013 meeting. Commissioner Williams has the dog today.
We have a mixed stray, about three years old, found over in Elyria.
You need the microphone.
We have a stray dog, three years old, found over on Douglas Avenue in Elyria.
It's not turned on? We're having a hard time this morning, aren't you?
Yeah, still recovering from a broken washing machine.
Oh, no.
Low battery.
Low battery?
Great, Tom, you want this?
Okay, we have a three-year-old female stray that was found on Douglas Avenue in Elyria. Good, tough a bit, great dog. If you could come out Saturday, or actually, any time now, and adopt this young lady, would appreciate it. How many dogs do we have at the kennel now?
About twenty.
About twenty dogs, so if this isn't the one that you want, feel free to come out and take a look at the other twenty dogs that we have.
She sees somebody she wants to go with, I don't know, is it you over there? She found her home.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, we have a proclamation this morning, Ms. Amber Fisher.
Come on up and join us, Amber, I'll read this and then we'll let you do your thing. How's that sound? "In the matter of proclaiming March 2013 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month throughout Lorraine County. Whereas Murray Ridge Center recently celebrated its forty-fifth year of providing services to Lorraine County children and adults with developmental disabilities and their families. Whereas seven hundred and twelve infants and toddlers with suspected developmental delays received early intervention services in 2012. Whereas in 2012, one hundred and sixty-two students with developmental disabilities received educational services in early childhood, primary, intermediate, and senior classes at Murray Ridge School. And whereas through Murray Ridge Center in 2012, more than nine hundred and fifty adults with developmental disabilities participated in training and/or work experience in three opportunity vocational centers, several community employment enclaves operated by the Murray Ridge Production Center, or in other locations throughout the community. And whereas in 2012, residential services were provided to fifty-six individuals with developmental disabilities living in Murray Ridge-operated group homes, eighty-three individuals with developmental disabilities living in small group settings in the community, including homes operated and maintained by Murray Ridge Housing Corporation, and two hundred and ninety-two individuals with facilities, foster care settings, their own apartments, or with their families. And whereas, participation is encouraged in local, regional, state, and national Special Olympics activities, provide recreation and competition experiences to adults from Lorraine County eligible to participate. And whereas assistance that will permit families to care for a family member with a developmental disability in their home was provided in 2012 to seven hundred individuals through the Family Support Program. And whereas Murray Ridge Center staff network with social service, health, and welfare agencies to enrich the environment of children and adults with developmental disabilities, and to find appropriate residential services for individuals with developmental disabilities placed on a waiting list. And whereas, Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities oversees funds from federal, state, and local sources, provide comprehensive services to Lorraine County individuals with developmental disabilities and their families. Now therefore, we, Ted Kahlo, Lori Kokowski, and Tom Williams, members of the Board of Lorraine County Commissioners, do hereby recognize Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities and declare the month of 2013 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in honor of the sizable contribution made to the welfare of Lorraine County children and adults with special needs. Witness our signatures the sixth day of March 2013." Dr. Amber, Dr. Fisher?
Thank you so much. We at Murray Ridge and Lorraine County residents with developmental disabilities and their families are very grateful for the community's support of the mission of Murray Ridge Center, and we count ourselves very lucky to be in a county where the entire Board of Commissioners is genuinely concerned about the welfare of people with developmental disabilities. I'd just like to begin by telling you how big that is. That is huge, and it is so very much appreciated. Thank you. You know, every Commissioner has been out to Murray Ridge, you've seen our programs and facilities, you've spent time talking with me on multiple occasions about our programs, and recently, you've scrutinized our numbers, because we will be on the ballot on May 7th, Issue Number One, please support us. And we come here every March, but I think that every year offers us an opportunity to impart new information about the meaning of what we do at Murray Ridge, because, in fact, we serve individuals. To be specific, about two thousand individuals in Lorraine County, not including their family members. And after all, every family has their own story. So I'm very happy to have with me today several of our program participants. And the first local is named Amira. And since birth, Amira has been part of our Early Intervention Program. As a matter of fact, she graduated on Monday, because she turned three on Monday, and our Early Intervention Program is geared towards children ages zero to three, and that program is funded almost entirely with local levy dollars. Amira was born with a rare genetic condition, and until Amira turned three, her family received specialized instruction in the home from an Early Intervention Specialist two times per month. During the visits, our staff was able to provide the family with state-of-the-art strategies to use during its daily routine to stimulate Amira's development. And at this time, I would like to call Amira and her mother, Laura, up to tell us a little bit about their services.
Hi, my name is Laura Rouse, this is my daughter, Amira. Three years ago, I say three years and two days ago, our twins were born, Adam and Amira. Two weeks later, we learned that Amira had a rare deletion of a chromosome known as Creedashaw. I'm sure some of you here today, that's the first time I ever heard those words. I didn't know what to expect, I didn't know what that meant or what to do. Two weeks later, we were in the janitors' office at Cleveland Clinic. After answering many, many questions, Amira went through a very thorough physical exam, and the poor little baby had to give more blood. The doctor gave us information, she helped to set up other appointments with more physicians, and she gave us a number to call for help. Help, I didn't know what that meant or what people could do, who could help us. But I called the number and a meeting was set. At that meeting, we met our Early Intervention Specialist, Stephanie. Over the last three years, Stephanie has given our family information on development, she has connected us with resources, and given us sites for support. Stephanie has taught me how Amira learns through interaction and play. I in turn, taught that information to my husband, to our eleven-year-old son, to my family, my friends, and even kids in the neighborhood. So everyone who interacts with Amira would interact with her in ways that would help her to further her development. Stephanie also taught our four-year-old girl and Amira's twin brother how to play with Amira, so again, she learns to her fullest potential. You can't imagine the pride I felt a few weeks ago when Amira's twin brother was downstairs playing, I was upstairs folding clothes, and I heard him say, "Good job, Amira, big girl!" I don't know what Amira did. Adam knew she worked hard and deserved praise, and Adam learned that from the information that he learned from Early Intervention. A little over a year ago, we started to go to the Early Intervention Play Group. There, Kim and Stephanie taught Amira lots of little things. The Play Group is kind of a precursor to preschool. And in the Play Group, Amira learned how to interact with peers, and how to follow when someone has the lead on things like singing Five Little Pumpkins. As I posted to Facebook just a few days ago on the twins' birthday, these little things mean so much. When you don't know when your child's gonna hit a milestone, and they reach that goal, the feeling inside is overwhelming. Kim and Stephanie, and everyone from Early Intervention, helped Amira reach so many goals over these last three years. In December, we saw Amira's developmental pediatrician. He is so pleased with her development. He said when she was born, she was so tiny and so fragile, and she's come such a long way, and she really has. She has done so many things that we just didn't know when she would. And it's all been with the help of so many people, with the information we've had from the Early Intervention Specialists, who have given our family information, they've given our family caring, love, and support. From them, we've gained knowledge, we've gained courage, and we've gained hope for Amira's future. We are internally grateful for everything we've been given, and we can't say thank you enough for all the help that we've received. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, as you can see, our Early Intervention Program does have a profound impact on children and their families, and Amira's now at a preschool program in her local school district. Many of the kids who go through Early Intervention actually do return to their local school districts, and she actually is missing her second day of preschool to be here, so that was very special, but they understood that she had a television engagement, so. The second person that is with us today is Owen. And Owen is a four-year-old who lives with his family in Wellington. Owen has been diagnosed with Lowe's Syndrome, which is characterized by anomalies affecting the eyes, the nervous system, and the kidneys. Now, Owen is an individual who also has received services from Murray Ridge Center since birth, but Owen went on to our preschool program after Early Intervention, and he's actually now in his second year at Murray Ridge Preschool, where he benefits from in-classroom therapy, our exceptional staff, and a wide array of specialized educational equipment. And Owen is also planning to attend Murray Ridge School in the fall. And I'd like to say, we do have two children with us today, because it's important to, I think, impart the things that are supported primarily with local levy dollars, and our school is heavily dependent on local levy dollars for its operations. So Owen is making his way up, and he's gonna tell you something. Good job.
Singing now.
Great job, thank you so much. Okay, and the last individual we have with us today is James, and James is sixty-three years old. And James actually began receiving services from Murray Ridge Center before we were even established as a County Board of Developmental Disabilities, before the 169 boards. He began receiving adult services from us at the age of nineteen, and I believe things have changed quite a bit since then. Hillary and I are gonna go out to lunch with James and really get the scoop on the old days, but he's been with us for a long time. Now, James is like many of the adults in Murray Ridge Programs, in that he lived with his family until his father passed away at the age of eighty-eight, about four years ago. We do have a lot of adults who are in residential, we haven't been able to expand that program for lack of funding in recent years, but most adults with developmental disabilities do live in the family home. And in James's case, and the case of many others, they stay there until the very end. We were lucky to be able to enroll James on a Medicaid waiver program, where he was able to get a little bit of in-home support to cover the things that his father could not cover as he aged. But after his dad passed away, he lived with a sibling for a couple of years, and when that was no longer feasible, James moved into one of our Murray Ridge-operated group homes over here on East Ninth Street. And his services are funded through a Medicaid waiver, which means that they're almost sixty percent, a little more than sixty percent, is federal funding, but we have to use our local levy funding to pull down those federal funds. So, with that background, James, would you like to come up and tell everybody a couple of things about your home and your work? Hi, James.
My name?
Your name's James?
Yeah.
Yeah?
My name's James Mackey.
Okay, how are you?
I got my dad's name.
Are you junior?
I'm junior, my dad was senior.
Okay.
I got his name.
Okay.
And my name's James Mackey. My name's James Mackey Junior, my name was War Two, called War Two. Yeah.
And you go to MRDD?
Yeah.
Developmental Disabilities, right?
I don't know.
And do you work?
Yeah.
Do you work?
I work in, I work in open.
Okay.
I work open now.
Do you like it?
Open, it's okay.
It's okay?
I got a girlfriend in there. I know all my girlfriends.
You got friends there, that's good.
Yeah. Some guys know me. Some guys know, some guys know me, in that place.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's nice.
I got nice people there.
That's good.
Yeah? Did they hate me?
They don't work you too hard, do they?
Oh, man, I ain't work out, I was doing new papers sometime. I did new papers.
Okay.
Sometime. I colored sometime. I did color sometime.
Okay.
That's what I do. We ain't got no work.
Uh-oh.
Ain't got no work that works out.
Then you get to color when you don't have the work.
I used to open before, no time ago.
Well, James, thank you so, so very much, and I think we can go up front maybe and take a picture now with everything?
Sure. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate your story, and Amber, all the great things that you do for the residents and the people that you serve, thank you so much.
For the residents, I think Issue One is probably one of the more important issues on the ballot this year, and would hope that you would take a look at Issue One and support it. They do a lot of great work for the community, and this is a program that's actually working for people that need to help, so please support Issue One on May 7th.
A second half.
Madam Clerk?
Okay. Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments today? Requisitions?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Number nine, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner, I do have a potential hire in one of the Commissioners' departments that I'd like to talk to the Board about, also update you on our ongoing labor negotiations, specifically at the county home. And also, we have been discussing a potential purchase of real estate. All three topics are allowed under the Sunshine Law for Executive Session Talks, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meetings, say we go into executive session, so I can discuss those issues with you. Thank you.
Okay. Number ten, authorize payment of $1,000 to Boyer and Cool Home for funerals in Lorraine for indigent veteran David N. Hubfer in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5901.25.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion?
Mr. Cordez, were you able to resolve the matters?
It was upon review, and they sent information over. Seems to defy a little bit of logic, but it is where the veteran dies, not where they're a resident of. I'm sure there's some reason for that, but it just seems a little unusual, so this is a perfectly correct request of us.
What about the sales tax issue?
Haven't resolved that yet.
Okay.
But I will be looping around that, I just wanted to get
This part over?
This part over with, and then I'm going to contact the funeral home themselves, but I just wanted to get the law part done.
Okay.
Okay. Did we want to vote again? Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Okay.
See, learn something new every day. Okay, thank you.
Number eleven, approve repealing and adopting new Section 6.2 for vacations and Section 6.4 for sick leave conversion of the Board of Commissioners Personnel Policy Manual.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion?
Mr. Cordez, this was added after I left yesterday. You want to expound upon it?
I'm gonna defer to counsel, who's been working on this issue for clarification, if that's all right?
Yeah, Commissioners, after looking at the policy that was passed in December, I think there was some accidentally, some paragraphs lapped off the resolution, so we needed to correct that. We also wanted, there's been a couple of issues that have been questions of interpretation over the years. One of them, how these apply to elected officials. The state law clearly shows that these don't apply to elected officials, so we just wanted to clarify that, so there was no misunderstanding. We also have, our last policy change occurred back in November of 2005, when we changed the amount of hours that you could get paid for, for sick time, from a thousand was reduced to two-hundred-and-fifty, and there's been a lot of questions as to how that applies to people that were employed before the county and came back, so I tried to clarify that so that there's a clear understanding as to what first hire is, as far as what they can cash in on those hours, so.
What was it determined if somebody should come from another entity to the county, can they have more than two-fifty then, or not?
Well, I mean, our interpretation is that they vest with what they had before, but when they come back, they would now only be able to accumulate and be subject to the two-fifty. So say, for instance, somebody left and they had four-hundred hours, they can keep that four-hundred hours and get paid off for that, but for anything they accumulate now, they're restricted to the two-fifty, so they would be capped out at six-fifty. Some people are coming back and thinking they could jump back to that one-thousand, so that's how we're interpreting it now. You retain your old amount, and to the extent that you had that, you could piggyback that onto the two-fifty, but you can't, somebody new coming in after 2005 can't go all the way up to the thousand hours.
And this is civil service law, right?
Well, it's everybody, and the folks coming to us, and I think your question was a little bit more expansive possibly, we're required by law to take their sick time.
Right.
We had a question recently, and it came up twice, about people that were co-employed by another political subdivision while they were in our employ, and subsequently, they left that employ and wanted to put their sick time from that employment into their bank with us, and we wouldn't allow that, because they have to, upon hiring, we have to take what they have, but not what they accumulate someplace else. So we've cleared that question up. But interestingly, while we have to accept everybody's time, if somebody leaves and goes to a city, or a village, they don't have to take the time into that jurisdiction, it doesn't go that way, it comes all the way. And that's by Ohio Revised Code. That's because the cities possess the home rule ability not to do that. Most of them do not allow you to bring in your sick and vacation time. So, you know, some of those things, I want to explain that, because sometimes folks out there don't know how restricted we are, and why we do those things. We've had people come into the system from other, have been hired from other counties and professional folks, but they bring an awful big liability with them sometimes. But this is just a clarification of all the policies that were in place, nothing's changed or new here, it's just incorporated into one document for ease of explanation when we need to use it.
This came up because of people retiring and then coming back?
There was, there was some of that going on. We keep, every time we seem to close a loophole or an area, somebody seems to exploit another one.
I guess I have a question, if someone had a thousand hours or close to it, could they still get the additional two-fifty then?
No, there's still gonna be
So it's still a max?
A thousand hours is the max, anyway you can put it together.
Okay.
The other thing I've suggested, Jim, is I think we need to kind of put together a flow chart, you know, because this policy has been changed so many times, going way back to the eighties. I get a lot of questions from elected officials or the auditor, asking what applies here, and literally, we have to get a flow chart that establishes the history of our policy, and then each employee, get their employment history, and see, it's a little bit of a pain, but that's how we're gonna have to do it. So I think when Teresa gets back, and she probably knows where all that stuff is, we should put together a flow chart to distribute to all our departments, so that they can track, you know, we're just gonna basically have to track every employee to see where they fit in this sequence.
I think it's been closed now, but
Well
We've thought that before.
They're, yeah. I've read over it and tried to find things, but, you know, because of these different changes, there's, there's a whole bunch of scenarios that we just don't always think of, and will probably be something else come up in the future. This addresses a couple of problems that have come up frequently in the last couple of years.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Okay. Under Job and Family Services, approve and enter into IVD purchase of service contracts between Lorraine County Child Support Enforcement Agency and Lorraine County Prosecutor and Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court Juvenile Division as follows. Under Prosecutor's Office, non-federal matching funds in the amount of $249,917.04. Federal matching funds, $485,133.08, with a total of $735,050.12. Under Domestic Relations Court Magistrate, non-federal matching funds in the amount of Federal matching funds, $238,159.86, with a total of $360,848.27. Under Domestic Relations Court Juvenile, non-federal matching funds, $124,915.62. Federal matching funds, $242,483.26, with a total of $367,398.88.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Number 13, in the matter of amending Resolution Number 94-831, authorizing Lorraine County Job and Family Services to compensate employees for evening and weekend coverage for the Adult Protective Services Emergency Hotline to also include compensation for backup supervision.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, number 14, approve and enter into a construction engineering agreement with K.E. McCartney and Associates Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $394,500 to provide coordination, construction, administration, and inspection services for the LOR Oberlin Avenue Phase Two, Part Two B, resurfacing and water line replacement project in the city of Lorraine, Ohio.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Number 15, award a contract to Underground Utilities in Monroeville, Ohio in the amount of $4,743,586.80 for the Oberlin Avenue Phase Two, Part Two A and B, resurfacing water line replacement project in the city of Lorraine, Ohio.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Number 16, approve proposal from Arcadis U.S. Inc., and authorize the final design engineering, including the preparation of right-of-way plans and completion of the remaining environmental studies for the reconstruction and widening of Learnagle Road in North Ridgeville, Ohio. Proposal is in the sum of $452,800.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Number 17, approve or request for Nowaka to place various roads on their transportation plan for federal funds.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do have one quick issue. We need to do another advance for one of the departments. Of course, the timing on our quarterly budgets, some people are running a little short in the quarterly allocation, not in their annual allocation. So I want to pass this down. This'll just take care of that problem, and of course, we'll balance the books with that when we do the complete appropriation.
Okay, Mr. Ennis?
They'll need to pass that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know it was something.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Look at it first, real quick.
Right, sure.
Okay, this is an account transfer from Domestic Relations to allow for funding of second quarter year 2013 salaries and PERS allocation due to holiday and overtime payroll payment timing issues.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
And for my, this is a very short comment. I just want to reinform you because I think I sent an email that Jack Saunders' dad passed away, and my condolences to him and his family. He's been, he'll be out for a few days, but it's always, it's always a challenging time when you, when you was a parent, so.
He just lost his mom not long ago, too, so it's very difficult.
Jack's our dog warning for individuals that don't know him.
That's all my comments, so thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, since we've been doing several ditch projects, I'm working on trying to standardize the forms and the procedures we go through. In doing that, when we have our hearings, we're supposed to actually set a deadline for the, you know, like last week on the Straw Hague Ditch Project, we asked the engineer to proceed. We're actually supposed to set an initial deadline for that. So I'm going to ask that the Commissioners supplement the resolution, and I think Ennis has the resolution number, just by putting a date for the engineer to return those reports. If he doesn't get them done, he can come back and ask for us to extend it, but we're not supposed to just leave it open-ended. And I talked with Wayne, and he suggested October 16th at 9:45, just to submit his reports.
October?
He's hoping to get it done by then.
I would hope so, so we can get it done this year.
We're going October 16th, it didn't get done this year.
Right, that's what I mean. Why would it take so long?
That's what he gave me, so.
Put the pressure on him, Engineers' Office. Okay.
Well, right now, we can move it to that date.
We'll, we'll put it October, what was it, October what?
16th at 9:45.
Straw Hague. We don't need that much time.
Okay, they're going to make a strong effort to beat that date, he said, so.
June would be nice.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We're moving the Straw Hague Ditch to October?
No, the, the engineer getting their estimates in by October. That's why I said it, we were hoping to get this done this year.
Yeah, well, see, what happens is, you're not going to get it done this spring because it's going to get too soft before all that, since there's not going to be any work on that. So, you know, the best time to be doing that is probably, I think, I seen, I saw Bill here earlier.
Yeah, he's here.
Probably November, right, Bill?
Yeah, winter's a good time to do that work, because ground freezes, I don't know. So it's not a bad time.
Yeah, we get a good freeze in late November, early December, before the snow's coming. It's a good time to do that kind of project.
You can set it earlier if you want, because it can be extended. That's just the date he gave me.
The other, the other piece of this is that I understand, and I don't know if Bill has it yet, he's been on hiatus a little bit, is that they're going to submit this for some grant funding through your Subcommittee on the SWAC.
Yeah, we just got a-
You had to come up here, Bill.
Sorry, Bill.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Good to be back.
Yeah, we just received a request from Carl Attanji, actually yesterday, requesting our assistance in putting together some estimates so they could apply for some funding through the SWAC for the, for the part of that project, so we'll be taking a look at that.
Are they going to have it submitted with the other projects that have been submitted for review?
I believe so, yeah.
Because I know without, without cost estimates, it's kind of challenging for them to put in for a grant.
Right, yeah, so we're going to be working on trying to put some estimates together, preliminary, of course, but the best we can.
Welcome back, Commissioner.
Is it, Jerry?
Well, I got, do you want to put October? Do you want to put it earlier?
What would be a feasible date, would you say?
Again, it can be changed.
I'd say, let's do August.
August, August 15th or so? I don't know what that date is.
Yeah, the second, second Wednesday in August.
Okay, whatever that date is.
The second Wednesday would be August 14th.
14th, okay.
At 9:45.
At 9:45?
Correct.
Okay.
I just need a motion.
We want to make a motion on that, Dan?
Yeah, motion to move it to August, August 14th for Straw Hague Ditch.
Second?
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
That's all I have, Commissioners.
Okay. Commissioner?
Well, this morning, Commissioner Kallo and I attended our Team Lorraine County Board Meeting at 7:30. Mr. Kallo had brought up to the group about supporting our transit levy that's going to be on the ballot, and most of the people that were in the audience asked, well, what is it going to do for my community? So I was wondering, Mr. Cordez, if it would be possible to, since we know what the funding would look like if the levy were to pass, some type of illustration for the communities to say, well, this is, if it passes, this is what our routes could look like. Not anything set in stone, but-
Sure.
Something that, you know, what am I going to get for my money?
That's fine. One of the, one of the problems I have with, with this, and we can try to make it simple, I just don't want anybody holding on fees and files, because we have to get first transit to go out and time the routes. And that, then we start spending quite a bit of money to do-
Which I brought up.
Oh, I didn't know you did, but-
We know what we did with the routes prior to the cuts, so.
I'm not so sure that we're going to go back to the old model.
Okay.
We, we need to take a look at that. I'll bring you something.
Okay.
We can, we can mark something up. I just don't want to spend a lot of money.
No, I don't, I don't want you to do that either, but I think we should show the community something as to what they're going to get for the money.
Yeah, with this, it's really not, I mean, it's really not going to impact all communities. You're not going to see it, you know, talking with Mr. Cordez, this is more about community service, you know.
Right.
He used the example of people giving $2 a year to the Salvation Army at Christmas time. And, you know, I talked to a lot of township individuals because they want to know, how's this going to improve their lives? It's not. It's going to improve the lives of individuals living in the larger cities-
Correct.
Where the need is, there's a good need for it. So that's what I've been communicating to individuals as well.
And I appreciate that. I have met with students for transportation, been meeting with both colleges. Some of the students at both colleges are actively engaged in wanting to support transportation, public transportation. That's the same message, you know, that I've been delivering. This, this is not necessarily going to give you anything. It's, it's a hand up to somebody else. It's more charitable look than it is, we're going to put this great big transit system out there. Truth is, it's not a lot of money. It's the smallest ask we could do, and we need to capitalize upon that, multiply it, and then we'll put some services out there, but it's a small drop in a big, big bucket for what we need. So I'm just, I'm just going to continue to send the same message Commissioner Williams has been sending, is, is that, no, it's not really going to serve your community, but it is our community, and our community is bigger than-
Than just you.
Than just where you are. And, and I don't know of any really big county that wants to call itself progressive that doesn't have some form of public transportation.
There aren't any.
There aren't any.
They don't have revenue streams going towards their transit.
Right, so, but I think that we're being responsible. This is an initial ask. It hasn't been done before, and it's a very small, responsible ask. And hopefully, people will look at it and say, I want to do something for my neighbor that doesn't have any other choice but to ride the bus. And by the way, just for the record, riding the bus isn't really a great thing either because it takes a long time to get where you're going. So this is not point-to-point service. These folks are usually on the bus quite a while, sometimes have to switch buses to get someplace. And also, let me point out that this provides dial-a-ride for those that are handicapped or challenged, or seniors with, you know, limited mobility. Again, it's not point-to-point service, but they'll be able to get to a doctor's appointment or get to a supermarket to get food. Those people don't have any other choice. We don't have any convenient riders, and this is not going to make it easy for somebody just to ride over to the mall and go shopping. These, these folks, this is all they got.
Well, what I would encourage people to do is go to Lorraine Community College and actually see the individuals who are preparing their schedules around the bus routes, and they're trying to improve themselves. And it's difficult when you don't have the ridership. And, you know, this is going to really impact, I think, Lorraine and Leiria the most, but as a entire community, it's going to help improve our residents and hopefully bring employers here as we educate our workforce.
That was one of the discussion points I had at Team Lorraine County this morning, is how it moves people to jobs, especially those people who can't afford cars, like when we had the stop right at, in Sheffield Village, at that industrial park, for their workers to get to, I mean-
Right.
It's very important, I mean, the working poor to get to employment.
If they don't have a way to get to work, they can't keep work.
Right.
And they have to be able to get there consistently. We had a Green Circle growers before, they had their big fire, approached us to work with them. They're not very high-paying jobs, and they're, they're labor-intensive, but there was plenty of folks up north that would take those jobs if they had a consistent way to get to work. We weren't able to put a program together with them that made sense for them to be able to bus workers out, out to their facility. We haven't stopped looking at it, and we're looking for some grant money now that possibly could help with that outside of FTA money. It's just, people can't re, can't get to work consistently, and they're not going to get hired. When we hit out of workforce, we had on the whip board from, from private business that, that they, they have jobs, they're not really high-paying jobs, but they have a problem getting people to them consistently.
And then the other levy, don't forget, is our Drug Task Force levy. That's very important, and we had a big drug bust last week, actually the same day as the State of the City address, so I congratulated all our law enforcement agencies on, on that, so. And then this afternoon, we will be meeting with leadership Lorraine County that are here for their government portion of what they do, and they're going to be here to ask the Commissioners questions, I think at 1:00 or 2:00, so look forward to that. End of my report.
Okay, yes, we did that, we did that, we did that.
Keep following me around.
Yeah. Still ongoing discussions at the state in regards to the budget. Turnpike discussion is in the Senate this week, and the funding issue, and also the County Commissioners Association put out a white paper in regards to the changes in the sales tax that are being proposed. Not as big of a problem with broadening the base, but more in regards to limiting our our ability as local officials to put levies on the ballot. And in a lot of communities, counties statewide, they have dedicated revenue streams that, and their temporary tax levies that have to be renewed every three or five years. The new legislation prohibits that also. So, it causes all kinds of issues with bonding and providing services that you've committed debt service to. So, we'll see how those discussions go coming up. End of my report.
I actually spoke with Senator Manning on this here, let her know how, you know, with the bonding issues, really negotiation part of it, what we're trying to get a favorable bond rating by having the governor go through and restrict it for three years. It really, um, kind of ties our hand as far as any type of negotiations go. Uh, I've always been opposed, against imposing a sales tax, but at least when you're in negotiations with the company, you can tell them, or the agency, you can tell them that's an option in order to keep your bond rating, rating favorable. Uh, so, I did, um, talk to Senator Manning on that. I always spoke to her about the, um, proposed bonding of the, uh, turnpike and spoke with ODOT with that. Uh, they're telling me that the majority of the funding will go north of Route 30. And it's going to have to be tied to the turnpike, so... Waiting to, uh, see what happens from the public hearings that's going on today and tomorrow.
We just asked them to put it in writing. Put it in writing.
Getting elected officials to put something in writing, that's a challenge. But, um, hopefully, they'll stand by what they've told us. A busy week, uh, with multiple agencies. Uh, I'm not a member of Timoraine County, but I went in after the meeting and spoke with Sam from there. There's a couple companies, actually, that are looking at leaving the state because of state bad state legislation that wants to restrict, uh, gun use. New York, very strict. You have Remington that's actually looking at moving out of state in New York. You have an ammunition company in Colorado, and Beretta's actually looking at moving as well. Uh, I've been working with our Timoraine County group along with some of our gun clubs here in Lorain County, NRA members, and, uh, trying to get, uh, a welcome packet that's going to go out to these companies, letting them know, "Ohio's open for business, but more importantly, Lorain County is the place to be." And while we get this together, I will ask that the Board of Commissioners supports this as far as trying to bring this business here to Lorain County.
We'll take everybody.
I'm in agreement with that. Um, and then...
I agree on something.
And then the last thing I wanted to bring up was the Ohio Hispanic Heritage Coalition. Next Friday, um, they're doing a wonderful event, um, actually multiple ones. But the one I'm going to be going to is a comedy show, March 15th to, um, at 7:00 PM at the Underground Cafe at 401 Broadway Avenue in Lorain. Again, it's March 15th at 7:00 PM, Underground Cafe, 401 Broadway Avenue. They're going to have three shows. They had one last month. They're going to have another one coming up, I believe, in April, trying to bring in some entertainment into the city of Lorain. They also host the Salsa Social, and they do different causes. I believe this one coming up is, um, it's not stated on here. Just different charity organizations. Going to try to make one of them, so if you really want to see comedy, you can see me out there trying to salsa. I'll let you know when that's going to go on. End of my report.
Okay.
I thought it was funny just thinking about it.
That's, for, for folks that are not looking for that, that's the Reverb Duane Building downtown. It's really nice down there. If you haven't been down there, there used to be a restaurant down there.
Yep.
It just didn't survive. It was really a nice place. Have to go through the side, there's a side entrance on the side of the Duane Building, uh, right, right, uh, right at the corner, the intersection across from city center.
Okay, no clerk's report today. Board Correspondents?
Move the reading be waived.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Any public comment for today?
Come on up.
Please join us up here. Hello. Just tell us who you are and where you're from.
My name's Emily Treforres. I'm with the nonprofit group called CABT, Coalition Against Bigger Trucks. I just wanted to take a few minutes today to, um, make you aware of some legislation as part of the bill you already mentioned, HB 35. Um, there's two provisions in it that we have concerns with from the safety standpoint, infrastructure, cost to taxpayers, as well as modal diversion. One of the pieces in the bill is they want to increase truck weights on the state routes from, can you hear me? Uh, from 80,000 to 90,000 pounds. And that would be on state roads, and so obviously, we're concerned with the infrastructure there. Then another piece of the, the bill that we're concerned with is that the bigger trucks that are allowed on the turnpike, like the, the triples, currently have a one-mile buffer off the exits, obviously to, you know, originate and terminate. And they want to expand that to two miles. So, obviously, that could impact the local, local roads and the local communities potentially, so...
It's a significant issue. I just passed it to the, to the Commissioners. We've been asked to weigh in through our associations and our legislators to take a look at that. 90,000's a big load on, on some of the, the ancillary support roads going. That's where the problem really occurs. And as you know, we, we have the sheriff out there with the scales, uh, trying to work through that. And I understand they want to even do bigger than 90,000 pounds.
Yeah, well, we, we do a lot of work at the federal level. In Congress, there's a bill pushing for 97,000 on the interstate, so... But this would just be the, the state roads at 90 in Ohio. So, um, so ultimately, what I wanted to ask, I know, uh, Mr. Williams, you said you talked to Senator Manning on, on other topics, but I just want to see if the, the Commission could chime into her office, and she is the Chair of the Transportation Committee, and perhaps share your, your views if you're supportive of, of us.
Uh, have you contacted her office at all?
I have not.
All right. Uh, I can give you the office number. They're doing public hearings...
Right.
Uh, today and tomorrow. Um, what I would suggest is maybe sending her an email as well so she can hear from you directly, but I would be willing to give her a call and let her know the issue.
Okay. Well, and just because we're grassroots organizations, good to hear from the, the local folks and how it's going to really impact the counties and the cities and whatnot, so...
Well, it's been a discussion. I hope anybody from our Engineers' Office would like to chime in in regards to this. Bill?
Do we want a letter from the Commissioners?
Well, a lot of it's been done by resolution across the state, opposing it just because of all the runoff. And a lot of this has to do with the fracking, you know, the large trucks that are running.
Yeah, we're aware of it. I know the County Engineers' Association, Association's come out against it.
Correct.
And we support that, uh, anti-increase, uh, and, you know, I've talked to Ken. Possibly we could draft up a letter through our office.
And the CCAO is doing the same thing.
And the CCAO is doing that as well, yeah. So, I think it's something that we certainly oppose and would like to see out of the bill.
And if they extend that, that, uh, limit for off the turnpike, you take Route 58 exchange, for example, now they're in a congested area down where Golden Akers is very easily.
Right.
With some very large equipment. Uh, and I think to the, you said triples, but isn't it oversized, too, that they extended that for?
Yeah, so any of the larger...
Yeah, so it can be an oversized load, not just, not just a 90,000-pound load, but it can be, they used to have to have a permit, right, when they, when they...
Exceed the standard 80,000.
Right. Is, you guys want to do anything with this?
Well, Bill, what type of, um, what's the impact on our roadways right now? I mean, the design of the roads?
Well, I mean, the current standard is 80,000 pounds.
Okay.
You know, and it'll go to 90, so, I mean, we have certain bridges that are already posted for the load reduction from the 80, so, I mean, I mean, but they're mostly on rural roads, so, I mean, you're not going to see those. Is it just state highways or also county roads?
Just state highways.
Just state highways. So, I mean, but if they're on a state highway, they got to go somewhere, so...
Right, they got to get on or off. The issue is, they got to get on or off, and then they're using our local roads, our county roads...
Right.
And township roads, if anyone were taking it. And that falls down on our backs to get those roads up to snuff. You know, or can do the 80,000. I mean, Rusher Road, you run a heavy load because of alley.
Right. I mean, a lot of our bridges... Will probably accommodate that load, but, you know, some don't accommodate the current load, so we have them reduced, so...
The biggest impact's when you're breaking, right?
Uh, of course, yeah.
And that because I remember on 57 from the steel mill.
Yeah, well, the asphalt shoves and everything.
We get in that road from all the semis going down there.
Oh, the rutting.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you get some impact loads in that you wouldn't just... The 80,000's just a gross load on the bridge. But the breaking adds impact that also is considered in the structure.
Most of our roadways don't have at the intersections any, a deeper footer...
No.
For that, so...
It causes major problems locally.
Yes.
That's why the Commissioners Association's been against it for a long time, and the Engineers' Association.
Yeah, we've always, the Association's opposed it from the beginning.
I mean, I wouldn't have a problem doing a resolution today, uh, asking the state to maintain the 80,000 load limit.
You know, my feelings on going through with resolutions to the state, uh, I...
Well, there's a piece of paper to tell them how we feel here.
I, I know, I, I just, I, I, I'm not in favor of doing it. I would be willing to give Senator Manning a call, or state reps a call, even contact the governor's office and talk to them and let them know the concerns I have as an individual. But again, with resolutions, I don't support doing that to tell other legislators how to, um, do their job, so...
I think that's our job, again, that's their argument you and I have. I think that's our job at the local levels, let them know how we feel at the local level and how our constituents feel. Because sometimes, as they get farther up the chain, they get kind of disconnected from...
Right now, though, I don't know what their argument's going to be for it.
Well, just to run bigger loads, a truck.
Yeah, but, I mean, what are they looking at? Are they, what type of economic impact? Are, do things going to come from this? Do they have anything? I don't know.
Well, a lot of it's, again, it's being pushed by the larger industrial at this point, the fracking, and, you know, they're running serious water loads. I mean, and they're running all kinds of heavy weight on our roads, so that's why it's being asked to up the limit.
If the CCAO already has come out against it, would it be redundant for us to send another resolution?
Well, you've got other communities doing it, no different than the one I sent to the... I shared them with Commissioners yesterday, Medina, uh, in opposition to the turnpike on the funding that's going. They had a resolution to it. Lucas County did one that was different than Medina's because you have different values around the state on how people look at them.
I, I just think as an individual community, it really doesn't have too much weight in it. I think actually picking up the phone, calling them, talking to them actually carries more weight than passing a resolution where, basically, they get the piece of paper and they file it.
Is that what you did when the township gave you their resolutions?
Wow, good job, Commish. Wow.
I'm just telling you what goes on at the state, and you know that goes on.
I'm more than familiar, none of it.
What's, what's that new movie, Boom?
Kevin James, good actor.
Do you support an issue to have them maintain the 80,000 agreeing with the Commissioners Association and the Engineers' Association?
Absolutely, yeah.
Let me just be reinforcing what our organizations have already said. I'm going to ask you a question.
You don't want your money?
No, I'll, I'll make the phone calls and I'll talk to them.
Make the phone calls, we'll send a letter.
Yeah.
Okay.
I say we'll take any, any help we can get. Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Motion's out there, Commissioner.
Second?
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Anybody else wishing to address the board?
Make a motion to move an executive session is outlined by the county administrator.
Second?
Okay, discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page. Then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.